Welcome, and thanks for joining us this evening to our second virtual Town Hall levy meeting for Bellbrook Sugar Creek Local Schools. I'm Doug Cozette. I'm the Superintendent of Bellbrook Sugar Creek Schools. And tonight, we're going to be answering questions that have been provided to us and also provide information about the levy that our school district has on the November 3rd ballot. So again, thank you for joining us this evening, and I'm going to allow everybody to introduce themselves.
I'm Kevin Liming, the Treasurer for the School District.
Kevin Price, School Board Member, appointed in January of this year due to a vacancy, due to a health issue for one of our former School Board members.
And I'm David Carpenter, I'm the President of the School Board, and this is my fifth year on the Board.
And I'm Jeanette Sigmund, I'm the Manager of Business, and I will be reading tonight's questions. And we'll go ahead and start with the first one.
Go ahead, yep.
So this is a simple one, but what are the details about the levy?
This, the levy is for $3.3 million. It's calculated by taking 35% of the old, or 2019 appraised value, and then multiplying it by the 5.7 mils. It ends up at $199.50 per year for every $100,000 of the old appraised value. So the reappraisal does not impact this levy. That's $16.63 per month. If a resident qualifies for the homestead exemption, that amount would be less than the $199.50 or the $16.63 per month.
The only other thing I was going to say is that it is an operating levy, and an operating levy just pays for the normal day-to-day operations of the school district, transportation, technology, supplies, equipment, maintenance, utilities, and staffing, those kind of things. It's not a bond issue, which is one that is used to build a building or purchase property.
And it's Issue 21 on the ballot, on the November 3rd ballot.
Okay, for our next question, what is the financial situation of the district?
Okay, well, every six months, we are required to file a five-year forecast. They are due May 31st and November 30th. In that forecast, we have three years of history on each one of the revenue and expenditure line items, and then we have five years forecasted into the future. Our particular five-year forecast for Bellbrook Sugar Creek Schools shows that we go into the red for cash at the end of the 22-23 school year, fiscal year, June 30th, 2023. That is illegal in the state of Ohio, so what will most likely happen when that is filed, the state will put us in either a status of fiscal caution or fiscal precaution, and it will require extra paperwork to be filed to show how we can overcome that deficit. And assuming that no levy is ever passed, we have to file that paperwork. And then, the further you get down the line, you go from a fiscal caution, to a fiscal watch, to a fiscal emergency. And the state, as you move from one of those to the next severely listed status, we then become a district that becomes more and more controlled by the state, and we have less and less local control in issues as we go down the line. Just want to say though, too, that if this levy passes, the forecast shows that we are in the black for all five years of the forecast, and possibly a couple more years after that, depending on a number of items that could change that between now and then. But was asked if we pass this levy, is the plan to come right back with another one with additional cost to taxpayers in a couple of years, and that is not the case. Let's see, also wanted to say that at the end of the five-year forecast, fairly dire situation, we show that we are in the red about $8.1 million at the end of five years without more serious cutbacks or additional funding.
So why is the levy needed now?
Well, in addition to some of the things I've mentioned there, our district's rather unique in that we are considered to be a wealthy school district in respect to resident property values and resident incomes compared to the other districts in Ohio. Because of that, we get very low state funding, about 25% to 27% of our revenue, and the normal district is more in the mid-40s, 44%, 45% for state funding. So we have low state funding, we have no income tax for school district purposes, several of the districts in Green County, in fact, all of them except for Beaver Creek and our district, have income taxes. So if you have no income tax, you have low state funding, the only other way to get significant funding for school districts is through property tax levies. And there are other things that figure in, you know, we have a lot of state and federal mandates that we'll talk about here later, and House Bill 920 that we'll talk about later also.
Kevin, on that one, through some data review I did, what I found was that 86% of districts in Ohio received more money from the state as a percentage as compared to Bellbrook. So when you consider that, the 86% of the schools in the state are receiving more money as a percentage of their input from the state, that's pretty significant. And again, we only receive on the order of 27% of our budget, but again, 86% of the schools throughout the state receive a higher amount. So that's pretty telling, and when you add to that what you just said, that we're unique and that we're considered a well-to-do district based upon property values and income, then the state doesn't have much interest in helping us. And that's unfortunate, but that's the lens by which they view it. And the consequence is, you know, our district then is relying upon property taxes, and unfortunately as well, we don't have an abundance of commercial property, you know, to further add to that. So that's why we're faced with the unique situation of Bellbrook having to, you know, turn to property taxes and recurring levies to fund that, which we'll talk about more, why recurring levies are needed, and largely it's due to House Bill 920, which I'll elaborate on in a later question.
And really, the passage of the levy will provide some financial stability for the school district. The more time it goes on, that if the levy doesn't pass in November, then we lose a whole another year of funding. So funding is through calendar years, so there wouldn't be any funding to the school district for the specific levy if it doesn't pass. So it just continues to pile on, and we really, you know, we're really at a crossroads here, and we've made a lot of reductions already, which we'll go in further detail in a few minutes with another question. But it really is to stop those budget reductions and try to provide the well-rounded quality education that our students deserve, our community expects. And so that's why the levy is needed now, to continue to provide those great experiences. And as you talk to people of why they move into the community, the great little community, close to everything, but the major reason why people come here is because of the quality of the school district. And so that's really what's at stake here, is the quality of the school district. If the levy isn't passed and we continue to go down that path of having to make further reductions, as Mr. Liming said a few minutes ago, that you can't operate the school district in the red. So if we don't get additional funds, then the only other way is to reduce expenditures. And more than typically, that means programs, because a vast majority of our budget comes out of, comes for personnel, and that's because we're a people business. Schools are a people business, and we don't have a big warehouse full of goods that we can sell. It is a people business and people-intensive business, and we should be spending our money on our folks because of that. So, I don't know if anybody else has anything to add.
Okay, for the next question, how did the Bellbrook Sugar Creek Schools decide on the amount needed?
Again, so, you know, this summer, based on all the facts and figures, looking at, you know, the past levy results and so forth, and also taking consideration, the state cuts that were coming our way of over $1 million of state cuts, and then also taking into account the budget reductions that we had to do because of those past levy failures, and putting all that information together, and also looking at what's the least amount of money that we can ask our taxpayers, and still to provide a quality educational experience. So that's why we continue to stay with the 5.7 mil levy, and that's what it was last time. And effectively, that's what it was the first time, because the need has not gone away. So you put all those things together, and that's why we continue to stay with the 5.7 mil levy. That's how we came up with that. It's a little over $3.3 million that's going to be brought into the school district. And I think we'll talk about this a little bit in just a little bit. But again, the school district, on this particular piece of a performance audit, the school district continues to operate in a transparent, diligent manner of our budget. We have a very lean staff. We take obviously our financial situation seriously, have forever, but we operate in a very transparent manner, and, you know, we are being very diligent with our expenditures. Again, we'll get into the performance audit in a little bit. That state auditor came in, no cost to district, and looked at our information. We'll talk about that in just a few minutes.
If I can just add on to that with financial stability you were mentioning, we want to have that as a district. You know, in a couple of years, we're seeing our district being in the red, and really, we need to have a buffer, like a 10% of our annual budget available at the end of each school year, excuse me, so that we can address emergency types of scenarios that we might have, you know, a deficiency with buses that might break down, we need to be replacing buses, we might have a pandemic that we have to deal with. You know, those are things that add additional expense that, you know, may not be, you know, part of the original plan, and we have to have a buffer in order to be able to provide the services that we provide currently on a regular basis. So that's another consideration for why we need it now as compared to just why we need it.
Sure. I thought of one more thing. We are saying that the district doesn't go into the red on the five-year forecast for two years, but you can't wait two years to pass a levy in that situation, because you pass the levy in one calendar year, and you collect the money in the next calendar year, at the end of the calendar year, throughout the year. And so if you need that amount of money, you really need to start a couple of years ahead of when you're going into red, or else you're going to wind up with a passage of a levy that didn't quite, you know, solve the problem, and that's not a good position to be in.
Okay, I'm going to combine these next two questions. We've been hearing a lot from people, because I think you're going to answer them both in your response. But what kind of impact will the reappraisal have on my taxes? How much will the new property values raise my taxes? And I'm going to tie this next question in with, is the levy based on the new property value assessments or the old ones?
The new, the levy is based on the old property assessments, so those from 2019. So that, this 5.7 mil levy is calculated based on that amount. It is for $3.3 million, and that's how, and that number does not change. But the reappraisal, it will impact your tax bill in what they call the inside millage. It's a small portion of your property taxes, about 12%, and the inside millage for the city is 9.7 mils, and for the townships, it's 7.9. So for the impact on how that will impact your tax bill, if your property value goes up $10,000, your total amount of, that it'll impact your tax bill is $2 to $3 per month for a $10,000 increase. So, you know, if it's gone up 30, it's going to be between $6 and $9 per month as an increase. Most of our, the dramatically large part of our funding doesn't come from inside millage, it comes from voted levies, and those are, the levy amount or millage is recalculated based on the new appraisal to even out or make the amount collected the same as it was collected in prior years. So that, the reappraisal doesn't give us a big jump. You know, if you have an 11% increase in your appraisal, we're not going to get an 11% increase in our taxes. And at the same time, with the way that those amounts get calculated on a level basis, if your, if the value of your property goes up 10%, and the average is, say, 12 or 13, then there's even the potential that your total tax bill will go down. So, you know, because of the leveling out, and Mr. Price will talk about in House Bill 920, it'll provide some fluctuation in what your tax bill is based on how your appraisal compares to others in the district.
Right, and I might just add, and this would be something I would say to several of these questions, if you want details about your personal tax bill, contact David Graham, the Green County Auditor's Office, and have them address your tax bill individually. It's hard to make swooping statements about effects of taxes, because each individual property tax has little changes that are different, they're unique, so.
David Graham's been very clear about that. When I've communicated with him, trying to understand, you know, the reappraisal, inside millage, outside millage, et cetera. So what he says is, go to the website, take a look, you know, there's a tool there, you can figure out what it is. And, but I think it's really critically important to understand what David just said, that what gets affected by that is inside millage, and of which the school, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 4.5 mils that the school gets, which works out to be about 12% of the overall budget of the school. So about 12% of the school's budget or tax revenue.
12% of the tax, 12% of that person's tax bill.
Correct.
Yeah.
So only, and that only is what gets affected by the reappraisal, and that can go up or down based upon what happens to their property.
Correct.
So it's really, in the big scheme of things, a much, a very low in comparison, you know, to the overall valuation, how it affects other aspects of it.
Basically, don't think that if your property values went up 15%, that your taxes are going up 15%, because that's not even close to correct.
Correct. And it's easy to think that, but it's not so.
No.
So for something like that, correct me if I'm wrong, so on the inside millage, your taxes will go up proportionally to the increases out there. So if it's 10% on that, if your taxes go up, if your property goes up by 10%, on the 12% of the inside millage, your taxes will go up proportionally that way for your inside millage, which is only about 12% of your tax bill. But on the other 88% of your taxes, they aren't going to go up, they may go down of your 88%, depending on if your property is increased more than the average, right?
That's right.
Right. Okay. And of the money, the school district receives, additional money, the only additional money the school district receives is based on that inside millage increase. The district receives no additional money on the 88%. That's just readjusted among all the taxpayers. The school district receives no additional money from the reappraisal on 88% of the taxes of your tax bill. Is that?
That's well said.
Yes, okay. Because I know that's a very complicated thing, you know, the, on the Sugar Bell Review, there is a great video on there, it's only about 20 minutes long, with Diana Pressnell and David Graham, they have a visual, it's almost like beads or something, you know, in some cups, of how that all works, inside millage, voted millage, how much additional money that the school district receives. It's just a great visual, because it's a very complicated concept. And so I know that on our website, we will put that link on there, because it does a really nice job of explaining it visually, because it's a very difficult, can be a very difficult concept to understand.
Okay, before we go to the next question, I just want to remind everyone that at 6:30 we will cut off new questions coming in, as we've had a few more come in just now. So if you have any questions you'd like to email, email those to info@bss.k12.oh.us. And again, 6:30 will be the cutoff, because we already have about 35 questions that we need to get through tonight. Okay, the next question, I see a lot of new construction around the district. How does this impact my taxes and the amount of money the school district receives?
Well, in the average year, the school district receives maybe $200,000 to $300,000 from new construction, assuming it's a typical year of construction. You know, what was it, 10 years ago, we basically received nothing when we went through all the housing problems.
Kevin, that's really, really important. Can you say it again?
Yes. We only receive about $200,000 to $300,000 a year from new construction. Now, that goes up a little during the year of reappraisal, and it would go down, obviously, if we had a cutback in housing, you know, housing's not doing very well. And our budget is $30 million a year. So we're talking a very small portion of our budget from new construction. And then the other thing to remember is, if we have a bunch of new construction and we do get a decent amount of money from it, most likely going to bring more kids into our school district and cost us more to educate those kids. As you think through all that, if we get a lot more kids, we need another school bus or two, we need another teacher or two or three, and things like that that somewhat even out and eat that money up quickly.
And again, no one's going to not take $200,000 or $300,000, that's a lot of money. However, when a levy is on the ballot, and we have, it's $3.3 million, or we have a $30 million budget, it's not going to alleviate the need for a levy, especially when you have a budget of about $30 million. And also, just that as you do your five-year forecast, that information, those figures are already in the five-year forecasts. So an average about in that range, already in the five-year forecast. So if you look at the five-year forecast, that information is already forecasted in there.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. I was going to say that next, because that's an important thing, too. It's not like money we get from new construction can now reduce the amount that we need in the levy, because that was already built into the forecast showing the deficit in two years down the road.
Again, you got to think that just, there's, I think, I don't want to speak here, $1.5 billion worth of value in our community if you add up all the properties. And so you add in a development that's maybe $20 or $30 million, it's a very small portion of the overall real estate wealth in the whole community. And that's why, you know, it does have a little impact, but not a lot.
Okay, the next question, a postcard a few weeks ago was sent out that lists 14 areas affected during the 2018-2022 period. If the levy would pass, how would these areas improve? In other words, what will the levy pay for?
Sure, and again, Josh, if you can put that graphic up. And so I'm just going to walk through some of these facts about Issue 21. Again, this is also on our website, there's a levy section on our website, top right-hand corner. So I'm going to go through some of these, because these are some very critical pieces that are very important facts. So we've cut over $4.8 million in budget reductions from 2018 through 2022. Unfortunately, we had to do some program cuts this, beginning of this school year, K-5 STEM, K-6 ARC, World Languages, the gifted program, we eliminated high school busing, BCI in the middle school, went to the two-mile state minimum for busing, we increased sports participation fees, we eliminated about 85 supplementals that are sports, clubs, advisors, those kind of things, and also two librarians. All staff this school year took a pay freeze. So, you know, this is an agreement that we, that the teachers' union and support staff union agreed to us last November. They agreed to a pay freeze for this school year with no step increases. So a huge partnership with both of our unions. But everybody took a pay freeze this year, had insurance benefits for everybody in 1920, 2019 and '20. We have 11% reduction in our staff since 2018, so that's 33 staff members, 17 of those have been teachers. So if you see some increases in class sizes, or some less class offerings, unfortunately, those are the ramifications of that. Peer people spending, we're $530 less than similar districts, and over $1,100 less than the state average. So again, that's a good way to compare ourselves to other districts that are similar to us, and then also the state average, and we spend less than those districts. We have about 17 less teachers compared to our peer districts, seven less administrators compared to similar districts in the state average. Our school teachers and staff are paid less over their careers compared to local peer districts, and we'll look at a graphic in a bit about that. 44% of our buses need to be replaced. So again, we had a performance audit from the State Auditor's Office, they looked at our bus fleet, and so 44% of them are 12 years older or over 150,000 miles. 90% of our staff and student computers in their fourth year of life are older, and we really see, you know, through a pandemic where we either did remote, as we did remote learning in the spring, and then also as we continue to utilize computers and digital resources even more, that having reliable computers or Chromebooks is even more important, and we're unfortunately on the tail end of that, of the life. of the life expectancy of those computers and Chromebooks. Facilities and expenditures, we spend 13.5% less than our peer districts. Our resident tax effort is lower compared to all the school districts around us and our local peer average, and we'll look at a graphic in a little bit. And the last thing on here were over about $1 million in cuts from the state. So the state came in in May and said, your fiscal year ends in June. We're cutting you 11%. We're cutting you $650,000 in May and June. We effectively had to write the state a check because we didn't receive that amount of money in May and June from the state. And then they kept the same cut this school year. So those are, those are the areas that are affected because of that. And so the, the levy pays for these things because it's an operating levy. So the levy can pay for all of these things. And we'll, we'll, in a few minutes, talk about, you know, what could possibly come back or what's coming back if the levy passes and kind of where we're at if it doesn't pass. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything.
Yeah, I think, I think the key point is that these are the consequences. Levy failed not once, failed twice, and there are consequences as a result. And those are very well spelled out in that, that's, it's not up for debate. This is, these are realities. This is what happened. So you said we are going to talk later about what is going to come back. Obviously, we, we had this as a board meeting topic and we decided, and you're going to convey that a little bit later, right? So, so this is what's been lost. You'll hear later about what can come back. Previously, we've talked about what was going to be cut. And then I guess there was probably some doubt about whether that would really happen or not. The school year started, and guess what? Those things were cut. And so now we're, we're dealing with the aftermath. And, but, but the good news is there, there is potential for restoration of a good bit of that, as you'll hear a little bit later.
The other thing with the levy being on a calendar basis, so this, you know, passage now means that it has an improvement for, for second semester as well as all of the next school year. Whereas if it doesn't pass now and we, we have to make either additional cuts or try again in 2021, we, we have lost another whole year of, of funding. And so these, these would have to continue for at least another year, perhaps even longer. So that's, you know, it's, it's so critical that it pass this year.
That's a key takeaway because, you know, if the levy had passed in whichever month you want to consider it, whether it was March or May of this past year or of this current year, the, the revenue from that would have come at the same time. So whether it passed, you know, in the spring or is going to pass here in a week and a half, the revenue arrives at the same time. But there were certain things, though, that the school began with that they, that you can't, you know, not knowing if the levy's going to pass. Sure enough, we had to cut, I forget a number of teacher positions. Busing obviously was eliminated for high school students, various things. So the school year could not start with those in place. But it was, we'll hear later with specificity. If, if, if the levy passes, a good number of those things will be restored. And I think the question alluded to the flyer, but I'm not sure, did it, I, I guess we'll essentially cover it later when you say what's going to be restored. But just keep in mind, I'll just say it because often people are going to come and go during this telecast, and, and if you're like me, you need to hear it five times to remember it anyhow. You know, some of the big highlights of things that were cut, you know, was art in STEM, you know, for the K through, K through five. And then art for the sixth grade, busing inside two miles. And the thing that really continues to trouble me is the supplemental positions that were cut. You know, we've, we've lost things like science fair, the Model UN newspaper, JRTC color guard, you know, coaches. So again, we can get into specifics about what, later, what can come back. But keep in mind, it was, it was pretty severe impacts, you know, for levy failure.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to, I mean, let's continue on that. So Josh, if you can put that graphic back up, I mean, let's just, might as well, since we're here. So just, you know, and again, this is from the bridge. So the bridge went out to all the community members a few weeks ago. So this is, you know, I think page four or so of the bridge. And the bridge is on our website. So again, under Communication tab, it's one of the tabs underneath there. So if the November levy passes, it's right on the right-hand side there. So this, the second half of the school year, of this school year, if the levy passes, we're going to bring back K-5 art, K-5 STEM, high school busing. If we can find enough bus drivers to, to have those routes because it takes anywhere from six weeks to three months to properly train a bus driver, and we have zero subs right now. So there's not two or three or four people waiting in the wings for those positions. So, you know, so we, we need to, obviously have properly trained subs. 85 supplementals that Mr. Price was talking about. And then next year, we'd bring back sixth grade art. So those are all the things that we would bring back midway through the year and then the sixth grade art next school year. And so I guess on the flip side of that, if it doesn't pass, you know, as, as I've talked with people, if it doesn't pass, there's no immediate ramifications of that or consequences. But what it really was, in my opinion, what it really does is shifts the school district's decision-making to everything is now through a financial lens first and educational second. And it should be the other way around. Obviously, being financially smart, but we make a lot of decisions that are educationally sound and then financially sound also. And it's going to shift that. It's going to be finances first and education is going to be second or possibly third. And that really is disheartening to me. But when you fail a levy three times, unfortunately, that's the place we're going to be at and any type of future budget considerations are going to go through those financial lens first and the educational lens second. So it might be a good idea to note also that we, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of these numbers, there's a lot of numbers flying around tonight. $4.8 million have been cut. And I've also been asked on the other side of it, if citizens feel differently about things, are you planning on just, you know, bringing back the 4.8 million if we pass this? Or are you going, going to operate, you know, more, maybe more efficiently? And the answer to that is that, no, we're not bringing all that back. We're talking about, I think at the beginning, about $500,000 only coming back. And we'll see how we go from there. But that, that's an idea that, you know, we can, it's pretty much, what, 9% or 10%? Something like that, we're maybe bringing back.
Okay, we're going to go to the next question. Dr. Cozette just talked about the cut we got from the state recently. And, and Mr. Price was talking about how 86% of the schools get more money of the budget from the state than we do. So this question is regarding that. This says, the state is a problem because it's not properly funding our schools. Why are you not organizing to get our tax money along with lottery money? Why hasn't the schools and the Green County Treasurers and all the Treasurers gone and fought the state about the illegal way they give money to the school districts across the state?
That's an awesome question. And, you know, obviously, there's a lot of differences, you know, between those that think the levy should pass and those that shouldn't, that think it shouldn't pass. But I actually think universally, everyone would agree, I would say almost, I would mention without exception, that, yeah, the state should fund our schools differently than what they are. And, and, and I would agree that state funding is the problem. However, this is the reality, you know. And the, the question is here, what can we do? Can we, can we hold the state accountable and, you know, go, go fight them, you know? And we can join the yes and the no's, the lefts and the rights and the middles and everything, and go, go to the State House and, you know, and, and get this taken care of. Well, the reality of it is, that battle was fought 23 years ago, and it was won, that the state is inappropriately and unconstitutionally, you know, allowing schools to be funded by, predominantly by reliance upon property taxes. So the state knows it. They've been told it for 23 years. It was appealed and defeated again by, you know, basically state lost again. It repeated, repeated, repeated. So the bottom line is, the state knows what they're doing is illegal. They persist in ignoring it. And so either we allow our district to sink because we are trying to rely upon the state to do what they refuse to do, or we internally do something about it. And that's why you're driven to a, you know, a recurrence of levies, why they're essential for the health and stability of our school systems. If you're dissatisfied with, you know, what the state has done, then maybe you should consider who you vote for, you know. It's our representatives that need to be held accountable. So while we as lowly, you know, next to nil-paid school board members with other lives besides, you know, full-time advocacy at the, at the State House, it's going to be more of a, of a parent or citizen-driven initiative that would go to the state. And I encourage you, form an organization, get the yes people, the no people, and let's go hold the state accountable. Again, maybe it's by who you vote for and who, who you put in office. But at the end of the day, yes, the state should do more. We corporately, as each and individual citizen within this township and within this district, we should do more. For those that would say we should do more, I would ask you, have you contacted your congressman? Have you, have you gone to the state? Have you, have you tried to talk to your representative or your, or your state senator? Because we don't get a whole lot of love and affection just because we sit on the school board. They expect us to advocate for school funding.
Absolutely.
So if you want, what they aren't ready for is 150 people from Bel Brook to go up with signs in front of the State House and say, you know, comply with DROF. They're not ready for that. So I encourage you to go do it. But until then, we can't watch our school systems basically self-destruct because we're, we're looking for a lifeline that's not coming. And we have 23 years of history to demonstrate that that's, that's the case. So that's pretty much the way it is. And, yeah, appreciate the question. I mean, it's really, it's a good one. And again, I think yes and no and middle agree. But it's not happening. It hasn't happened. And I say no reason, especially, Dr. Cozette, as you said, not only are we not getting more money from the state, we're getting less.
Correct.
So rather than the state dipping into their $2.7 billion rainy day fund, they wait until levies have failed probably largely throughout the state back in the spring to like a week later then announce that they're going to cut K through 12. So it was a really bad announcement and with a really bad fact that they conveyed. And so we're having to deal with the aftermath of that. So I just ask that people really be informed, be open-minded to the reality of what, you know, the Ohio construct for school funding is. And that should inform you and help you to better make, inform decisions. Keep in mind, the state is not going to be there. They bailed when we needed them, so.
I would just add to that, that we needed the levy before the state made those cuts.
Right.
And that's not the reason we need the levy, but that makes the problem more severe. And the other thing is that, I think I've said this before, but there's just not a groundswell of energy at the state level to significantly increase funding to districts in the state that they determined to be wealthy.
Right.
You know, if we're going to increase funding for schools, it goes to those poorer districts, not poorer with their cash balance, but poorer in.
Communities.
Community.
Poverty level.
You know.
Higher poverty level.
Right. Higher poverty level, that's the way to term it.
One thing there, I probably glossed over when I said DROF. For those of you that have heard me talk before, under different circumstances, different places and whatnot, or even the school board meetings, you know, where I've explained it. But basically, 1997, you know, how the schools were funded in Ohio was taken to ultimately the upper level of our judicial system in Ohio to the Supreme Court. And basically, the premise was, the schools should not be reliant upon property taxes. Not that they shouldn't receive property taxes for funding, but they would not be reliant upon, and to me, anything over 51, 50% is, has got you reliant upon property taxes. So again, we're looking at, you know, whatever it is. It's, we get 27% of our funding from the state, certainly not 51%. So, combined with federal as well. So, so the reality of it is, you know, the, the state was told, and it's a pretty interesting read if you go back and look at the history of it. And when state lost, they, I forget who the governor was at the time, but he wasn't too happy about it and, and said what he was going to do or not going to do. And pretty much, they, they said, yeah, we're going to ignore the law and march on. And, which is stunning to me that this happened. So read up a little bit on DROF. There's some pretty Reader's Digest-level reading articles out there on it, you know, so it's not legal conflict, a lot of legal complexity to it. You can find some good summaries of what happened. But it was contested and again and again and again, the state was told, and again and again and again, the state ignores it. So that's why we're in the situation we are in.
I actually attended a hearing on DROF in the 1990s in Vinton County. It was an interesting, interesting thing, quite heated.
I'd like to kind of reinforce what Mr. Price said too about, the state expects to hear from board members and administrators.
We aren't doing our job if they're not hearing from us, right?
Right. But, you know, they consider a letter or a note from a constituent to be representative of 50, 50 people's perspective. So one letter, you know, is, is 50 people. So 100 letters is, you know, a, a big impact. So if you were, if you're so inclined to communicate to your state representatives, I certainly urge you to do that.
And actually, we're, the Green County Superintendents, we meet with legislators twice a year. And so we're meeting with them next month. So what I'm going to ask them, I'm going to ask them, how many people will have contacted them about, about their taxes or about state funding next month? And we'll see how many people they, they say have contacted. And when I've asked them that in the past, they kind of give me a deer in the headlights kind of look and say, nobody. Nobody has contacted me about that. I don't know what you're talking about. I mean, no one has contacted me. So I'm going to ask them next month and hopefully some people that have contacted them because I think that's the only way there's going to be any type of change. There is a funding formula. We brought Representative Cupp in December, and he discussed a funding formula. It's gotten some, now that he's the Speaker of the House, got a little more traction. However, it's going to be less reliant on property taxes, but it's going to be, going to switch that and put more reliance on income level, which if you look in our community, that's not going to help the funding in our community either. And so when they've done past simulations, we got maybe $150,000 extra from this funding formula a year, $150,000 extra. So again, no one's sneezing at 150 grand. However, it's not going to solve, you know, not going to alleviate the need for a levy. But the key piece of that is, they never found out where they're going to fund that from, where the money from, where it's going to go, come from. So they're even going to be in an even worse place now with, with the budget at the state level. So I, I just don't see that they're going to move on anything. And all of it comes back to the local communities and local decision-making. What kind, I think, you know, again, Mr. Price was talking about left, right, conservative, liberal, whatever. I think we can all agree that we want great schools locally controlled and local decision-making. And when you rely on the state for the funding, you rely on them for what kind of school district that you're going to have. So you give up that power to them rather than that local decision-making level at the, at the local community.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next question.
Yes.
Why are we here late night?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Didn't the district have a performance audit completed and what were the results of it?
Yes. So at no cost to the school district, and because we were in fiscal precaution at that point, the school district, or no, they were looking at our five-year forecast and then we became in fiscal precaution. They performed a performance audit on the school district. They, actually, Mrs. Sigmund did a great job of kind of facilitating, being our, our key person of communicating with the State Auditor's Office. They worked with us for six months, looking at our books, looking at all of our spreadsheets and everything and the way we did things. And so they came up with a bunch of recommendations for us. And what they ultimately came down to is, in order for you to, and they couldn't, they couldn't rely on a levy passage, all right? So it all had to be budget reduction. So that was their lens going into it. What can we reduce? And so ultimately, it got down to the end is, you can, you can cut your budget to, and almost to about zero of, of a deficit if you dramatically change your offerings to your students and to your communities. So to us, in other words, that means you're really frugal right now and very lean right now. The only way that we can make substantial cuts to your school district is if we eliminate programs. We eliminate people and we eliminate programs. So that's unfortunately the path that we've been going down because of the, the budget issues with the, with the failure of the levy back in March, with those total 33 positions, 17 teaching. And so again, it's a, I don't know, 40-page document or so. It is, it is on our website in the Treasurer's section, the Financial section, but it's also on the State Auditor's website. And so it's all right there for anybody to see. And I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything to that. It's a very comprehensive, but again, this is an unbiased report from the Auditor's Office, no cost to the school district, spent six months with us. And when I say we're being transparent, this is a huge piece of that as the Auditor's Office came in and performance audit, looked at the way we did business, and really their conclusion was, you can do, you can make, you know, a deficit or zero deficit at the end if you make major cuts to staff and programming.
I think one of the interesting takeaways from that, one of the complaints from some elements of the community is that the teachers are over. elements of the community is that the teachers are overpaid. And again, an independent party came in, independent entity, and I don't have the exact quote in front of me, but it basically said the Bel Brook teachers are generally paid less over their careers than teachers in neighboring districts, if I remember, something to that effect.
Josh, can you bring that one up? Do you have that graphic? We have that graphic. I'm going to put him kind of on the spot here. But, so again, it's not a moment in time kind of look at somebody's salary, but you know, the salary schedule, so the salary schedule, so there's a salary comparison review at the bottom. And this is based on last year, or actually the year before, because it was done last year. We were lower than all of the local districts, except in one area, BA plus, Bachelors plus 150. But we're going to be even lower now because we're on a pay freeze. So, you know, we want to be competitive out there. However, we're definitely not paying a lot more than other school districts.
I'd like to comment on the graphic too. On the chart that's above it shows
Sure.
where we are as a district in our tax burden. We're the bold green column there and in what our, there was a comparison of what our ability to pay is as compared to what we pay. And you can see that we are the lowest of what we're paying as compared to what our ability is to pay.
Right.
So we have the smallest tax burden of all those other districts that we're being compared to as our peer group, and I think the state average is in there too.
Yeah, we're lower than both.
Yeah.
Yep, definitely. And it's going to be even lower now because Beaver Creek and Centerville are right above us there and they passed a levy.
Right.
So since this was done.
Correct.
Since this was done, yeah.
At a higher millage than we were asking for too, by the way.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, for our next question then, since the levy has been voted down twice, would it make sense to offer a compromise levy? I would think that would increase the chances for passing, as does those opposed the first time only be more committed to its failure. Ask for what we need, reductions, have to come back sooner, but why are we not doing a compromise levy?
Again, I, you know, we have made $4.8 million in reductions over the past few years. And if you don't ask for what you need, then you're going to have to come back to the voters in a short amount of time. And they're going to say, well, didn't we just vote something in? Why didn't you ask for what you needed rather than, you know, asking for just a much smaller amount? And so that would just force us to go back to the voters even sooner. But we've made a lot of reductions here, and I would say compromises are as part of the reductions piece.
Well, in reality, this is a compromise levy, right? Because if it weren't, we'd be trying to bring back the things that have been permanently cut. So there already has been a compromise. Okay, so we made some cuts, staffing positions, I believe 33 it was, middle school languages are gone forever. So those compromises have been made, and therefore, this is a lower millage rate than what it would have been if it was intended to bring back everything that's been cut since 2018.
Great point, yep.
That's right. And we lost, since the levy failure at the beginning of 2019, we got no additional funding in 2020. So that's 3.3 million that we're down in
Correct.
addition to the reductions that we've made.
Yep. Good points to that, definitely.
Okay, for our next question, why are we as a community paying anything to the state teacher or to the teachers' retirement fund? Why don't you reduce the community's match for the $60,000 earners?
We're mandated to do that, aren't we?
Yes.
We don't have, this is not a choice.
We could break the law, I guess.
Well.
It's not like a private pension.
For a little while.
It's not like a private pension that a business would have where the, there's a contribution from the employer to the level that they want to do, you know? This is a state mandated contribution to state teachers' retirement and school employees' retirement
Right.
for the non-teachers.
I mean, the fact that we have it is mandated, but also I believe the percentages as well, right? So there's not like, well, we can say, well, just reduce it by a couple percent or whatever. It's fixed, mandated by the state.
It's actually kind of amazing, we get a lot of people with suggestions of areas where we could cut, and we appreciate that. But in many of those suggestions, there are areas that our hands are tied, you know, we have no choice. It's a state law mandate.
Right, and the staff pays half of that amount and the district pays the other half. So the teachers and staff are paying into that. And really, from the teacher's perspective, to increase the state teachers' retirement system solvency for 50 years, I think is what they have to be solvent for. About 10 years ago, they changed retirement benefits and so. So essentially, the way I like to put it is teachers or teachers now have to work longer, they have to pay in more, and then in retirement, they get less money. So work longer, pay in more, and get less in retirement. So that's, those are the retirement changes that have been made over the past 10 years that help out the state teachers' retirement system, but doesn't help out the individual teacher. And actually, what it does also as another, I guess, unintended consequence, or maybe the state intended it, I don't know, is now teachers, teachers in the past, they could have retired at 30 years of teaching. Now they have, most of have to teach until 37 years. So between 30 and 37 are mostly the highest pay scale of those teachers' careers. Those costs are now added on to the school district to have to pay rather than that teacher retiring at 30 years. So that's another unintended consequence to the school district. And again, we just can't say, we don't want you anymore. As a 35-year-old teacher, a 35-year veteran teacher, first of all, they have the experience and expertise of 35 years of teaching. That means a lot
Yeah.
to the expertise they bring to the classroom. And to, you know, sell that short is extremely unfair and unprofessional and just not, just not right. But, you know, those teachers come in with that level of expertise and so, you know, it's just another unintended consequence of changes in the state teachers' retirement system in the local school district.
Okay, for my next question, I'm actually going to combine another one that came in with it a little bit too. What is the budget for the year? You've talked about that earlier, but why can't you stay in the budget? And why do the district expenditures still forecast to climb each year even though we've made $4 million in cuts and eliminated 33 positions?
I think there's several different ways I might answer that. The first part, $30 million is our budget, as I mentioned earlier. We have, we have 265 employees, and that's down, I believe, 33 is what we talked about. So we've made cuts, we were at, you know, 33 more than that.
About 300.
Right, close to 300, 298 maybe. So we have 265 employees, and imagine this, we have 28 buses on the road, we have seven buildings, if you count the preschool, central office building and the transportation building, seven buildings that we operate. And, you know, those things are very expensive. You can imagine how costs go up in all those areas. So costs are going up from year to year, but yet our funding from the state is either frozen or, as happened this year, cut tremendously.
Yeah.
Then you get our property tax money, in many respects, it's flat too. We do get some things, as we talked about earlier, from new constructions, we get some extra money. But basically, our revenues are flat or reduced and our expenditures increase. Even with the cuts we made, our expenditures still increase. You have, you know, insurance rates have gone up like crazy. Things like this just increase from year to year. So depending on what you mean by, why can't you stay within your budget, I would argue we do. But I mean, almost every district in the state has to come back on a, after so many years for a levy because funding is flatlined and expenditures increase.
Inflation.
Inflation, right.
And some other pieces that we don't have any control over, and I don't know if it's a question later, but some unfunded or underfunded mandates
Right.
that we have to do. So when someone says, cut your budget, there's some things that we can't legally cut. And so Kevin, do you have some of those unfunded or underfunded mandates?
Yes, let's see. First of all, I think the question arose, are these some, are there any items in these mandates that we could decline? And the answer is no. The definition of a mandate is a state and federal requirement that is put in place and either for purposes of our discussion, they are not funded at all, or they're partially funded, and we have to pick up the remainder. And so some of these examples, probably don't need to get in detail on all these, but I wrote down the six largest ones I could think of. And I've got unfortunately, 1819 fiscal year costs, I haven't had a chance to update this for last year. But we have college credit plus, where we are required to pay for tuition and books for students who qualify to go to college while they're in high school. We have English language learner. By the way, college credit plus cost us about $93,000 that year. English language learner, about $103,000. We do have students at our district, quite a few actually, that do not have English as their primary language. Preschool, I remember back years ago when preschool was mandated and the state funded it partially, and every year they funded it less until there was no funding, you know, they did that phased-out funding for preschool. Charter and community schools, the kids that go to those, we don't receive state funding for those kids, it's deducted from our funding. Gifted education, that's about $381,000. Charter community schools are now, this year, that year, 1819, it cost us $250,000, are now up to about $300,000. Preschool's $416,000. And then the big one is special education that is not gifted. And that costs us, after, we do get some funding from state and federal for that, but the net of our funding, we still pay about $2.4 million a year for the special education items that we are required to perform. So those six different areas that I mentioned cost us about $3.6 million in the 1819 fiscal year in underfunded or unfunded mandates from state and federal government.
Looking at it from a $30 million budget perspective, so that's $3.6 million out of the $30 million budget that we essentially can't say no to.
Right. And the $3.6 million is a little more than we're asking for in the levy.
Yeah.
Another way to look at it.
And again, no one's saying that these aren't good programs, that these aren't worthwhile programs, that these aren't deserving programs. But what happens a lot with the state or the feds is they put something in and they fund it a little bit, or maybe they fund it that first year 100% and then they do what like Kevin said, is they phase it out. And so you get stuck with an unfunded mandate. Again, not that they aren't good programs, but you know, college credit plus, it's about $92,000. So essentially, great for families, great for kids, they get to go to college free. They go to college free, they get free college credit, very helpful to families. However, it's not free to the school district. The school district is paying college tuition and we have no say in that. We can't say, student A, you can't go to college on college credit plus. We have no say in that. If they want to and they meet the qualifications and requirements, they can do it. So, you know, it's just part of the whole, why can't you stay in budget things? There's, you know, pieces to it that we just are restricted by. And then also, like I mentioned earlier, we got cut $1 million in June, I'm sorry, in May for last year and this year. So, you know, there's only two months left in the fiscal year and they cut us by $650,000, you know? Why can't we stay in the budget? Well, they just cut us $650,000 when all of our costs are fixed by them. You can't make any changes in a fiscal year when it's May and the end of fiscal year is June 30th, so.
Okay, for the next question, you were talking about how our revenue's flatlined, so that's probably a good segue to this next question. Can you explain House Bill 920 and how it impacts school districts?
This is, I think, one of the most salient, critical things to understand from our discussion tonight. If you're going to be an informed voter, you have to understand House Bill 920. It is, that combined with the failure of our state to fund our schools according to law, is the essence of why you see recurring levies, not only from this district, but from every district in the state. Little history lesson here, please do some research, you can find it, again, Reader's Digest level reading, summaries of this on the internet pretty quickly. But basically, back in 1976, there's, I'm sure, some number of the audience was alive back then and, you know, and saw either as teenagers seeing what was going on with our economy, or maybe you're elderly and you were experiencing it directly with your income and whatnot. But basically, inflation was raging through our land like none other. Interest rates for home loans were 18 to 20%. I think the inflation rate was, you know, in the teens certainly. And so the state tried to do a good thing. And so they wanted to protect people because they didn't want to see people, you know, losing their homes and at a time when they could hardly afford to buy bread because of inflation raging through our land like it was. And so they passed House Bill 920. And what it does is, it was intended, noble intention here, it was a grand idea for what was going on at the time. It was passed to keep inflation from increasing voted taxes. So that, you know, as inflation goes up 10, 20% or whatever, your taxes are going to stay the same. Likewise, if your property goes down, you would still pay the same. It was just going to be, it was going to stabilize the revenue from property taxes. So that's great, right? Yeah, it was in 1976, when we had inflation that was, you know, pegged. It's not great for the schools in 2020. And let me, again, try to make this as clear as I can, it's a bit, you know, one of those complex subjects that, you know, you hear House Bill 920, you think you need a lawyer to help you understand it, and then you still won't understand it, especially if you get two lawyers and you've got two different interpretations of it, right? So anyhow, but the gist of it is, it freezes the revenue from voted taxes. And that is that outside millage thing we were talking about earlier. So taxes that are outside the inside millage, so that's about 88% or so that what makes up our particular township's revenue. So whether your house goes up a million, you know, down a million, whatever, across the entire, I'm exaggerating, right? But the point being that that particular levy as passed will never raise any more money from existing properties than what it did at the time of passage. Yes, new construction brings us a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, but overall, so if you have a, I'm just going to give a hypothetical here, there's actual levies, you can go look and see what's funding the school system. Some of our levies, I believe, date back even, current levies still date back into the 80s, I believe. We have some from that period. And let's just say that back in 80s, it, make up a number here, and we could get the exact numbers, but that's really not relevant to this discussion. But let's just say a levy from 1985 brought in $1 million. Guess how much money it's bringing in 2020? $1 million.
Yes.
Except for the new construction, which has added a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. So if you're a grocery store, hardware, gas station, or a jewelry store, I don't think that you can operate on the same income over a 35-year period when you have utilities, building maintenance. Oh, by the way, yeah, you will have to increase people's salaries over time, this is a function of, that's just what happens. Nobody's making the same salary, you know, that they made in 1985 and 2020 if they're, you know, it just doesn't, it doesn't rhyme, right? So you can't operate with the same income over an extended period. So House Bill 920 though, thanks to it, our levies are locked. So that $1 million levy from 1985 is still getting us $1 million in 2020. And so that, and please hear this, and please understand, and if you don't, please go research it, that is why the, in the state of Ohio, every school district has to come back for levies every, over a period of time. Normally, it's every four to five years, I think, is kind of typical, let's say on average, five years. The reason being is because you have inflation. And so as inflation kicks in, the state's not giving us more money, the income from our levies is frozen. So please tell me, where's the money supposed to come from? Now, for districts that, you know, are, either get all their money from the state, there's some that get 90-some percent of their money from the state, or a district that has a substantial amount coming from income taxes, yeah, those kind of get corrected, either by the state or as a function of incomes going up, you get more money from an income tax. But for a property tax-based system, and again, that's what we have here, we do not currently have an income tax, we're getting just 27% of our funding from the state. So what are we getting our money from? Property tax levies. And again, those are fixed. So inflation, anomaly, I don't know, what is it over the years? 2% in recent years is an average. So you've got to see additional revenue come in, else you take it it, you start making cuts. And you do it at the expense of your, of our students. And that's why these cuts that you've seen take place had, had to take place, because as Kevin Leinie said, we don't have a choice. We can't say, well, we're not going to balance our budget, we'll just print some money at the end. No, it doesn't work that way. So the state's pretty hardcore about it. You've got to comply with your budget forecast. It has to be, has to show you in the black, not just in the black by a dollar, but they recommend on the order of about ten percent of your overall budget. And so there's no choice here. So money is not just falling off the trees here. State's not giving it to us. We don't have income taxes that are, you know, that are scaling up that as a function of people's salaries increase. So I would really challenge anybody that says, this is ridiculous. We never need to have a recurring levy. Please explain to me. This is my challenge to you. Please explain to me, please explain to anybody that, you know, how schools that are dependent upon property taxes, because of the way the state's constructed our funding system here, how are, how are schools immune to the effects of inflation and basically, you know, and constrained by House Bill nine twenty from gaining extra income from, from existing property taxes? So there is absolutely no choice. It is the reality. And it's so critical that you all understand that. If you don't, then I don't really know what to say. I mean, you can say, well, the state needs to fix it. Yes, they do. And I said that earlier. You know, we can, on all sides of this, we can agree the state should provide more funding, but they're not doing it. And if anything, they're cutting it more. And so our levies are frozen at what they are. You know, the million dollar levy is going to collect a million dollar levy, million dollars, and, and that's it. So I don't know how else to explain it. Hopefully, I've explained it concisely. My wife says I use too many words often, all the time, but I really want to make sure this is understood.
Sure.
Well done.
It's really critically important. Again, my challenge is, if you, if you think levy should not be passed now or ever, go look in the mirror and explain to yourself how schools are immune to inflation and the effects of House Bill nine twenty. And I think you're going to find yourself pretty, pretty much challenged to do that. So I don't think you're going to be able to effectively do it.
Okay, for our next question. Going back the previous two levy campaigns, it was reiterated that the cuts being made would not be brought back if a future levy passed. Why has the amount of the levy not decreased to account for things not being brought back?
Well, I think it goes back to, you know, we lost a year of funding. We have a million dollars that we were reduced by the state. Those unfunded or underfunded mandates, costs continue to, to increase. So again, if you continue to bring all of those things back, your need for levy is going to be increased dramatically. But again, since we're, since we didn't quote, whether we passed the levy in March or whether we passed it in November, we were going to get it next year anyway. So that's why some of the things were brought back. But we can't bring everything back because that would just accelerate the need for a levy in the near future. I don't know if I'd answered anything else.
And when we went to our phase four reductions, you know, we stipulated that these are things that if the levy doesn't pass, you know, we'll have to cut. But if, if we get the funding, we would like to be able to restore, restore those items. So it's not, it's not like we were unclear or, perhaps the person who had the question wasn't clear about that. But it has been our intention for those phase four things to be able to bring back what we could, you know, once the, once we, we had financial stability to do that. You know, things like those programs with K to five STEM and K to five art, the sports, the clubs, the freshman basketball, lacrosse, math pentathlon, ROT, junior ROTC and so forth. Those were all things that, that we said, once we get the funding, we'd like to go back to those things. Because those are, those are important to our community. They're important to our students. So it's.
Right. And really, up until the phase four cuts, there was, again, there were teacher cuts and so forth, but they had a much smaller impact on students. And we did that on purpose. We really tried, from the beginning, the reductions we were making to have the least amount of impact on the students in the classroom. What that does, though, is it makes everybody in the school district taking on another job or another responsibility or working harder with same amount of time. However, at some point, you just can't, there's just no more, you know, there's no more, what, blood from a turnip, I think is the expression to use. There's just no more right there. So unfortunately, we had to go into the classroom. But there was, that was the fifth phase of cuts, even though it's four phases. The first phase didn't have, didn't have a number. You know, it's kind of like a sequel. There's, you know, the first one is, there's no number to it. But there's four phases there. So up until fourth phase, we really tried to stay out of the classroom because we wanted to protect as much as possible the student experience. But unfortunately, we came to that point.
I'm going to shift gears a little bit. What was the student to teacher ratio in the years two thousand seventeen through now? And what was the student enrollment in each of those years?
So again, this is something the High Performance Audit, they use the student teacher ratio. It's a little misleading because what it does is it combines all the teachers and then compares it to the number of students. So, you know, we have teachers that teach, you know, PE, or that teach music, or that's an intervention specialist, or, you know, and so forth. So they aren't classroom teachers. So I think when people think of teacher-student ratio, I think they're thinking of class sizes. So that's not the same thing. The teacher-student ratio is going to be lower because you're adding in all those specials teachers, as we like to call them, intervention specialists and so forth. So the, the ratio was about seventeen about three years ago, and now it's up to about eighteen point five teachers for every student.
Students for teachers.
For teachers.
Students for teachers.
Students for teachers, yes. I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry. Yep, other way around. But for class sizes, you know, we're, most class sizes are, you know, low twenties to high twenties. And again, it depends on the course. You know, I know there were some classes last year and this year, there's thirty-two, thirty-three kids in some classes, especially last year. But there are a few this year that, that are up to the higher twenties, lower thirties. It just depends on what kind of class it is. But that's because we didn't fill seventeen teaching positions over the past, you know, two years. So those class sizes continue to go up. And unfortunately, if the, the budget issues continue to, to stay there, that's unfortunately, it's probably going to be a place, you know, either got to cut programs, cut students, you got to either reduce expenditures or increase revenues. And when you can't increase revenues, you got to reduce expenditures. And because we are a people business, teaching is a people business, a vast majority of our budget is based on staffing. If it wasn't, that would be really worrisome. If only twenty percent of our budget was based on staffing, that'd be extremely worrisome. But we're a person, a people business. So as for the enrollment, you know, we, two thousand and six is our highest enrollment ever. And it was about twenty-seven fifty or somewhere in that range. And so we still aren't up to our highest enrollment ever. We're down about eighty or so this school year. But we were, we've been about twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred over the past twenty years. So like I said, we're, two thousand and six was about, was our highest year ever as enrollment.
Okay, for our next question. How much money was saved by cutting busing?
That one is a little difficult to pinpoint, but we concluded that it's close to four hundred thousand dollars.
A year.
A year. And the reason it's difficult is that all the factors that go into that, you have the drivers' salaries and fringes, you have the fuel and the buses. We've gone longer periods of time now without replacing buses because it's hard to buy buses when you're, you know, making cutbacks. And buses cost, by the way, now about eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars, depending on what kind of bus you're getting, for a new bus. But then when you have an older fleet, the repairs on, on those buses go up. And they're, you know, a newer bus is safer and more efficiently run and a lot of, lesser pairs, things like that. The other factor is that when you make cuts in transportation, the following year, you always get state partial reimbursement for transportation. It's not a lot, but they reimburse part of our transportation program. So if you've made cuts and spent less in that area, your reimbursement the following year is less. So a lot of things taken into consideration there, but we can, we think it's about four hundred thousand that we saved.
Okay. I've got, two questions are very similar here, so I'm going to word them, try to say both here, but they're about the same. One is, how long will the pay freeze continue if the levy passes? And this other question was, what happens next year after the one-year temporary pay freeze ends, and what will its impact have on the budget?
So again, the pay, all staff is on a pay freeze for this school year, and all contracts are up at the end of this school year. So there's no way to know what will happen with, with salaries in the, in the future here. However, there is some small increases forecasted in the, the five-year forecast. So those are things that are negotiated with our, our unions. And what was the other part of that question? I'm sorry.
You just said, they wanted to know how will it impact our budget when the pay freeze ends?
I mean, just to partially repeat what you said.
Sure.
We can't really answer that because it has to be negotiated. And we can't say what salaries are going to be in the future, or, you know, you're negotiating in bad faith if you stayed an amount and haven't even sat down at the table yet to negotiate. So I, I think, though, keep in mind that that is our largest expenditure. And that's, it's that way in every school district. So I'm talking about salaries for employees. When you have two hundred and sixty-five employees, when you're a school district, as we said, people business, that's going to be your largest expenditure. So any increases there will have an impact on our budget, but we have to remain competitive with other districts or we lose good teachers to other districts. So it's a balancing act there.
The answer is, you don't know, right?
Yes, that's it. All that to say, I don't know.
You don't have some hidden number here where you know. You don't know until it goes into negotiations and what the, what, you know, is going to be, I guess, negotiated, right? So, and then someone was just saying, David, I think you, that, yeah, it's, yeah, if you don't pay your teachers, you're going to lose good teachers to other districts.
That's right.
So it's just.
And unfortunately, we had a couple of those situations actually this summer where I think they, and again, I don't want to assume for them that maybe they've looked at the financial situation and just said, you know what, there's a much stable finance or school district somewhere else, and/or this other school district pays a lot more than you guys, so I'm going to go over here. And so, you know, we have a lot of good job applicants for our school district. However, just like anybody else, you know, if I can go to school district A and make three thousand dollars more a year, or school district B and make three thousand less, you know, over the, over a career, that is a lot of money that that person is, is losing out on. So, you know.
We actually had a staff member who resigned in this past calendar year and, and wrote that, you know, I have a, a growing family and with the, with the levy being unknown and the future financial stability being uncertain, that I'm, you know, I feel compelled to find a position in another district, which he did. You know, and you can't fault somebody for, for that. That's, you know, you, they need to be able to look out for what's going to be best for their families. He was very, very upfront about it, that, you know, the levy had failed and.
Right.
And so he felt as if, you know, I, I need to make sure that I'm looking out for the best interest of my family. And that's, you, you can't fault someone for that.
Unfortunately, losing a lot of good quality people that way.
That's right. That's right.
So for our next question, kind of goes along negotiations, if I'm remembering right from the performance audit. Question is, why wasn't recommendation six from the state performance audit implemented? So you might want to refer to what that one was.
I'm looking through this, so.
I believe it's about the negotiations.
Yeah. There were five elements to that, and it wasn't, it wasn't, teacher salaries wasn't part of it. It was tuition reimbursement for a potential saving of sixteen thousand dollars. Local professional development committee for an average annual savings of five hundred dollars, which is.
Five twenty-five.
Yeah. Okay, it's not going to, not going to solve our budget problem. An attendance incentive for fifteen thousand, and I think that's based on not having to hire subs. So in reality, it's a savings for the district. Mentor compensation and then merit pay. So and merit pay is, is a scenario where we essentially, we get an excellent rating where we've given a, what, a one percent incentive, but it helps, it helps keep salaries in line by having that incentive and not making it part of base pay.
Right. And again, the recommendation was to renegotiate collective bargaining agreements. Why haven't we done that? It's because we're in the middle of a contract. So we aren't renegotiating our collective bargaining in the middle of the contract. Our, our contract ends at the end of this school year. So those are times that we'll look at everything. And again, I just want to say, you know, our, our teacher union, our support staff unions have, they get it. They're very supportive. And they'll, they, they'll do whatever they can do to help out the school district. While at the same time, I mean, they're there, they have a financial situation with their own family, with themselves. And, and so, you know, it's a, it's a back and forth on that, that we want quality teachers. And part of that is, is paying, you know, a quality salary to them and a respectful salary to them. And, but they get that, the big picture of the school district too, and they're aware of. And they actually, you know, the salary freeze that they agreed to, it probably saved an additional eight, ten, twelve positions that would have been on top of that thirty-three. So them taking the zero percent pay freeze, again, looking out for programs that would have impacted students, they decided to take a pay freeze rather than those additional reductions and cuts. And I don't, I, I think that should be noted also.
I had a constituent send me a note about that to say, you know, I would be more willing to, to support the levy if the teachers, you know, had some gift to the whole process. And so I, I replied with seven different items to say, these are, these are the things that the teachers have, you know, backed off of from a salary or compensation component, which included, you know, foregoing supplemental duty pay. So they ended up a pretty fair amount of volunteer time, as well as the reduction in insurance, paying more of their insurance and the salary freeze. Those are the three that come to mind. But, you know, seven items, and they have really kicked in to help, help keep us.
Definitely.
From having to cut programs anymore. So that's.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, it is. It's highly appreciated.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you can answer the next question, but I'm going to ask it. The district has put out a lot of information to the community in the past about the levy. It's also held meetings to discuss it. Why do people keep on saying they don't know anything about the levy?
It's a great question.
If I'm not watching this, but.
The answer is.
The answer is, we, we do our best to try to get out as much information as possible. So we just review some of those things that we do as a school district to try to provide as much information as possible to our residents so that they can make an informed decision to decide what kind of school district that they want. And this postcard is one of those things. This goes out to all the community members, providing information on there. But on the back of it is, you know, information about tonight, a virtual levy town hall meeting of how, if you have questions about the levy or about the financial school, financial piece of the school district, you can ask questions to us. Tailgate talks, which are the socially-distanced coffee with the superintendent replacement. So we sit outside and there's questions that, that people come and ask. And, you know, it's been very small number of people that have come to those. So those are opportunities that if you need additional information to make an informed decision, you can come to those things. The other pieces are, you know, all the board members, emails and phone numbers are on the website. Kevin and my email and phone numbers are on the website. You can call us, you can ask questions. In the past, we've had people come in and they've had a list of questions, and we've gone through all the questions. And so we do our best to provide as much information as, as possible.
We've also published information in the bridge. We've got information.
Correct.
On our school website.
Correct.
So those are another, a couple of big, big areas for you to be able to find the information that you need.
Those are definitely good ads there.
And I think, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
Maybe we're a little uncertain too about what the nature of the question is. Are they saying there's not enough information out there, or is the information not easily understood? And again, what I would say is that it, this subject with respect to levies and property taxes is extremely complex.
Yeah.
It's not something you're going to say, okay, I don't know anything about it. I'm going to sit down here in five minutes and figure it out. No. No. You know, I've spent a lot of time over a year, almost three-quarter now, really trying to really put my arms around it. And when I think I fully understand it, I get humbled and realize, okay, I'm a, I'm a B-plus student. You know, I, I still don't have it fully mastered, but I think I've got the crux of it well-understood now. As I tried my best to convey earlier and tried to summarize it as simply as I could, that, you know, a combination of state, lack of state funding, the state ignoring the Deroff decision, and House Bill nine twenty constraining us to what we act. Deroff decision and House Bill 920 constraining us to what we actually get from our voted-in property taxes, that's what creates the problem that we have. So, and it's hard for people to understand that in just a 30-second to one-minute conversation. So I encourage you to do some research, use the resources that Dr. Cozad mentioned, and there's some other community resources as well that are available. And of course, you have the county auditor as well to get additional information.
Okay, for our next question. You have discussed what classes, subjects, services will most likely come back if the levy passes. What specific additional cuts will be made if the levy fails?
Again, I think I said earlier that there's no specific reductions that are going to happen in the immediate future if the levy does not pass. However, what it really does is it tells the school board and the school district that you just give up that power to the school board and school district to make any decisions, all decisions, through a financial lens first and an educational lens second. And so it really shifts that, what it is now and should be in the, in the past has been educational first and finances a close second there. But now it really shifts that. Unfortunately, if programs have to be cut, if there has to be bigger class sizes, those kind of things, it really shifts those things to finances first, education second.
And, and the other part of that is obviously, if it fails, it's going to be difficult to bring anything back that's been cut in that $4.8 million.
Oh, right.
If someone is a proponent of that, that's probably not going to happen.
Nope. Nope.
Because that'll be another year of $3.3 million that is lost.
Right.
Right. Just digs you in the hole even more.
Right.
I think that's the thing, Dr. Cozad, that you have brought up on more than one occasion. It isn't like, okay, we need $3.3 million this year and then, you know, and this upcoming year, and if it fails, well, we came up $3.3 million short. No, it's $3.3 million a year. So five years from now, we are, math in public, but $16.5 million, you know, behind what we are right now. So, so it's, yeah, it's a cumulative effect, kind of like age.
Well, for our next question, I think they're assuming the levy passed. So how long would it take to recover from the cuts we've had to make? And will we just bounce back to where we were before the levy failed the first time?
I think that's a pretty easy answer to say, no, we wouldn't be able to bounce right back. We've lost $3.3 million in this calendar year. If it doesn't pass, then we lose another $3.3 million for 2021. We would have to be asking for much more money on this levy if we were going to bounce back to where we were when we lost the levy in the first place.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I, yeah. Again, you just come back, I hate to use the phrase new normal, but if, you know, if it doesn't pass, that's kind of where we're at for right now, is that level of service and programs that are being offered by the school district. And we continue, we would have to continue to look for ways to trim the budget even more. Again, that financial lens first, educational lens second. I think that's what, is that what that question was asking?
Well, I think it was Mary, Mary Franz at one of our board meetings, you know, just summarized very nicely based upon her years of experience with the board, that, you know, it's taken decades.
Yeah.
To get the school where they are, school system where it is right now. And, and what is, I find tragic is that, I don't care which school district we're talking about, any school district in this state is no more than one or two levy failures away from catastrophic, you know, impacts to the, to that school system. And so, yeah, it's, unfortunately, it will, it's going to result in a school system that will start moving itself towards state minimum standards versus the very high standard and well-regarded and nationally-recognized standard this school system is known for and why people want to move to this community.
Right.
And so, again, you can, just like anything else, it can take a long time to build up something and a very short time to destroy it. You can build a house and, you know, it'll take you, you know, six to 12 months to build a house and it can burn down in 20 minutes. You know, so that's kind of a pretty good analogy for what we're faced with here. You know, schools that have been built up over decades or, you know, in, over a period of, you know, three levy failures, if that's what happens over a year and a half, have taken it to its knees. And that, to me, is pretty sad.
Indeed.
Okay, for our next question is, can't we wait until this pandemic is over to ask for a levy or at least wait until spring?
I think we've probably pretty much answered that one already. We needed the money last year and we'll lose out on it again if, if it fails this time. It will be two years without the 3.3 million. And we're in such a situation that I think it's the job of the, perhaps the treasurer, superintendent, and school board to look at situation and determine whether or not a levy needs to be put on the ballot and then the public decides it's needed, so.
Again, we just look at it, you know, again, we're very empathetic with, with the community and with financial situations, you know, but like Kevin said, that, you know, it's, it's up to us to determine that, to determine that need. And if we don't put that out there, you know, it really, it's really everybody that loses in that situation, so.
Okay, my next question is, how much extra money has the district received from the government because of the coronavirus?
Well, if we use the two grants that I, that are directly related to the coronavirus, it's about $299,000. But keep in mind, I think when someone asks that question, maybe they're thinking that that would solve our problem. But A, that money has to be spent on coronavirus-related, you know, remote learning or the different custodial.
Additional costs.
Additional costs.
Right.
So that's not helping our budget any. And we got cut 1.3 million from the state. So that, even if you net that, which isn't really a fair thing to do, we're still at a million in the, in the red there. Being cut 1.3 million, receiving 300,000.
Dr. Cozad, I think you explained in one of our board meetings that this district got kind of like a double whammy because, again, because we are seen as a well-to-do community, we can take care of our own, right? So, so both the federal and the state looked at us and said, well, you don't need as much money. And oh, by the way, when we, when we cut your, we're going to have to do some cuts K-12 across the state, you can endure more of a cut. So we got less money and we were cut more. So hence.
Correct.
You know.
We used, we used to refer to that as phantom revenue, which means like you might walk through a school district, through a community and think, I'll bet their school here is just loaded with money. But districts and communities like that, in many respects, have become the new poor because of what we're talking about. The state cuts so much money from that district because of the wealth that the school then becomes a poor district.
Yeah, it was all, most of those, the federal funds and the state cuts were all based on poverty level and the wealth of the property in a community. So that's why we got the double whammy is we have much less spent, or much less money from the feds and a bigger cut from the state. Other districts that have a high poverty level got the exact opposite. Again, I don't want to put words or thoughts in legislators' minds, but their, their thoughts are probably, that's because this community is wealthy. They can, they can afford higher taxes or a bigger cut. Again, I didn't say that, but I, that has to be their thought process or everybody would have the same cut. So.
I have another pandemic-related question.
Okay.
Are the increased class sizes negatively impact the ability to properly social distance in the midst of a global pandemic due to the failure of the levy?
Again, you know, our, our class sizes coming into the school year were, on average, a little bigger than they have been in the past. So, you know, anything like that, it does make it a little bit more challenging to socially distance. However, you know, our teachers and staff, administration have done a fantastic job of our back-to-school situation. And there's going to be cases out there because if there's cases in the community, there's cases in, you know, they're going to hit the school. That's just reality. But our kids have done a fantastic jobs, our, our teachers have done a fantastic job. You know, if you, you go through the school, besides everybody wearing a mask, it looks like school, which is fantastic. That's what we want. We want it to look like school, but everybody is, is taking things seriously at home. It's a partnership between the home and the school district and the community. And people are taking it seriously and it is paying off. And what we want is, we want to stay in-person, in-school the whole school year. That's what we want because we believe that's, that's best for everybody. So continuing to take things seriously as, as things kind of ramp up in the, in the state of Ohio, we have to do everything that we need to do to keep everybody safe and sound. But just going back to the, you know, the class sizes thing, you know, if there's a place that we're, where we can reduce a class or a teacher and class sizes stay averaged like other grade levels in the, in the school district. For example, last year, we had third grade. The numbers dictated that we normally have eight teachers in grades one through five, eight teachers in a grade level. Our third grade numbers, when we looked at them, they, it said seven teachers rather than eight teachers. And so it had about the same class sizes as grades one through five if they had eight teachers. So we didn't replace a teacher in eighth gr, I'm sorry, in, in third grade. And those students obviously moved up to fourth grade this year. There's now seven teachers in fourth grade because the, the number of students don't warrant that number of teachers. So we look at those numbers every year and if there's an adjustment that we can, that we can make, we make those adjustments.
I have another question. It came in at the last minute regarding technology. It said, has the district considered a BYOT or Bring Your Own Technology program for the district to better control technology expenses? This program has been used by a few surrounding districts.
We have definitely thought about that, looked into that. The challenges with that is tech support. Everybody has their own type of devices. And so who's going to service those? And if someone is, if it's your own device, you have to then service it. The other piece is, and actually, this wasn't one of the unfunded mandates or underfunded. So all of our state tests are online. Our diagnostic tests are online, such as MAPS. And so the, the state tests, they're all online and you have to use a school-issued computer in order to take that test. So even though if we went BYOT or, or, you know, Bring Your Own Technology, we would still have to buy an X number of computers in order to be able to efficiently do that, that testing. And what it would really do is bottleneck the testing also because you'd only have a limited number of devices. And so let's say you only had, you know, at the high school, we have, you know, 700, 800 kids. If you only had 100 devices, you have to then divide up all your testing window into, you know, certain areas because you only have 100 devices. So those are key pieces. The other piece is, you know, if I have a particular program, maybe it doesn't work on an iPad. Maybe it doesn't work on a PC. Maybe it doesn't work on an iMac or Mac. You know, maybe it doesn't work on that particular piece of technology. So as a teacher, I've got to also then, is that something I have to think about? But again, we are, we're thinking about that, looking at that, and if there's a way that we can, you know, possibly, we're possibly exploring that, it's just as a future option.
Yeah, if the districts, if their other districts are considering it or trying to implement that, I'm sure they have pretty strict limitations on what technology there, you know, you can bring if you're going to bring your own. You know, that, as an IT person, you know, it's one of those things where you kind of shudder because there's, there's such, such variation in functionality and what can work and.
This is another hurdle or obstacle than the teacher or the student has to jump over in order to maybe do an assignment.
Right.
That technology, that medium there.
Well, and then your costs associated with technology support go dramatically higher as well.
Yeah, which we cut half of our technology staff. So that's another challenge of the whole thing. So as much as we can automate the technology piece, the tech support is extremely challenging.
Sure.
Doug, this is a random thought that I want to mention before we depart here this evening. We talked about the things that are going to come back. I think maybe one of the things we missed, we're looking at bringing back full-time librarians to each of the schools, right?
Yes.
Was that mentioned earlier?
It was not, but that isn't.
Okay. Thank you for that catch.
Yeah, so currently, we have a halftime librarians at the schools. And I think the way it's actually being accomplished is some days they're not there at all, correct?
Correct.
So some days, some schools don't have a librarian at all.
All the schools, correct.
And to me, that's tragic. So we need to have a librarian. The levy would restore the librarians immediately, correct?
The second semester.
Second semester.
Correct. Thank you for that catch. Definitely huge piece.
Okay, I have another question that came in. Why hasn't the district considered a substitute levy, a relatively new type of levy being used by surrounding districts to collect more taxes from growth of new developments?
Okay, so a substitute levy is the, is a kind of a replacement for an emergency levy. So an emergency levy is a fixed sum of money. So, and, but it doesn't get more money based on new housing. And so that's probably why another school district around us is trying to transition from an emergency levy to a substitute levy because then they pick up all of the new money from new housing. But we don't have any emergency levies, so that, that wouldn't be an option for us to do. So that's why.
Okay, I have two questions. I think you really answered them earlier, but I want to make sure that people heard them asked, in case you want to talk to them again, is how do our teachers' salaries compare to others around us? And another question that goes along with that, does the district currently have difficulty finding and hiring qualified teachers because of the salaries?
Again, the chart, if you can bring up that chart, Josh, we did discuss this earlier of just, you know, in that performance audit. So again, we didn't, we didn't do this comparison. The auditor's office did. And they didn't look at, you know, a moment in time of what's the average salary because that's not, that's not a fair assessment either. Just because we have a veteran teaching staff, that brings their expertise to help out students on a daily basis. They looked at our salary schedule and saw, you know, as a salary schedule, how does it compare to other district's salary schedules? And so ours was lower in every category except a bachelor's 150, and that was last, that was last year. So this year, it probably is lower in all the categories because those other school districts had a pay increase and we did not. You know, are we able to still attract teachers? I mean, we are still attracting quality teachers. We've had great hires. But if this trend continues or something like this, it's going to be increasingly difficult to find good teachers. The teacher pool is extremely small anyways and it's shrinking over the past five, 10, 15, 20 years. And that's because, you know, from what I've read, that's because it's a hard thing. It's hard teaching. It's hard work on a daily basis. And the pay compared to other professions that have bachelor's degree, master's degree, master's plus, whatever, the pay is not as much as other areas. So, you know, that, that pool of teachers is shrinking more and more. And if other districts are much more competitive in their salary and their benefits, they're going to go to those other districts because, you know, we have a great school district here, but it's, you know, at the, and just like David, you had mentioned earlier, you know, of a specific person, you know, the financial situation of an individual, they have to take that into account. They have to be worried about their family and their, their finances and they got to make the best decision for them. So it does impact that decision. I don't know if anybody else has anything.
Quick thing regarding the chart that's displayed there. If I understood you correctly, that actually came from the state auditor's office, right? So this is not a Del Brook produced.
Nope.
Or, you know, any supportive people of the levy or whatever. This was a fact conveyed by the state auditor's office.
It's in the, it's in the report. It's in their report.
So this is not fabricated information.
Page four. Page four of that.
Again, like I said, the auditor spent six months looking at our books, looking at procedures. I mean, so again, when I go back to that transparency piece, they looked at it and at the end of the, at the end of the day, they essentially said, there's nowhere to cut here without really impacting your students and programs. I mean, that's pretty much the conclusion that they came to. There's, there's no fat here. You're extremely lean. And the only way that you're going to be able to deal with this budget is pass a levy, which they can't say that to do. Pass a levy or make substantial cuts that impact students.
And again, they were saying that salaries were, were as expected or comparable with the region.
They're below the local school district, which is who we're competing with for.
For hiring.
For hiring. We're not competing with people up in Cleveland.
Yeah.
You know, people from Cleveland aren't coming down here. We're competing with the local surrounding school districts. So we're lower on our salary schedule than all those other school districts and probably even lower this year. I would say, yes, we're lower this year because they had pay raises, we did not.
Okay, that's it. Okay, that's it for questions that came through that are related to the levy or school finances.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else want to, before I finish it up here?
Nope.
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Hopefully you found out some new information and thought, thought-provoking things. And again, we want you to be an informed voter. We want you to put all the facts together and make an informed choice in order, you know, this is a community effort between the school district, the parents, the community. You know, it's all, it's all together. We're all in this together. Have you heard that lately? We're all in this together. And there is another opportunity for, you know, for a tailgate talk, October 27th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM in front of Bell Creek Intermediate Gym there. We sit outside socially distanced with masks on and, but we ask, you know, you can ask questions at that point about the levy or anything else. And we'll be more than, than happy to, to answer those. So thank you very much for joining us and have a great evening.